Is this working here?
Hello.
Oh yeah, that's working. What do you have, boys? We have two hundred and sixty-five souls here tonight. Welcome back, peeps. Uh, it's town hall number, what?
Five?
Five. We're five weeks into those people and uh, thank you, love. A lot has happened. You know hot chocolate?
Yeah.
A lot of growth has happened in these five weeks, as you guys probably can see. Oh, there's an update in here. Should we load this? Anyway, we don't need that.
Well, it'll work either way.
As you can see, you got the hood up here tonight. Kelly's in her house coat. She's not wearing a house coat for luxury sake. It is cold. Um, even in the house, it is pretty chill here in the kitchen right now. It's blowing hard, uh, northwest tonight, like eighty kilometers an hour winds. It's sloppy rainy snow out there tonight. Um, we still have our wood stove going in the kitchen yet. We're working on it. Next few days, it should be going. Um, yeah, as always, Kelly wants to know where everyone's from. This is from Bay South Newfoundland, crocker sixty-nine. I'm surprised you know CBS is.
Yeah, I've been here for a minute. Come on. Yeah, everybody. Hey, we got from Norway. Mona, nice to see you. Yeah, everybody tell us, where are you coming in from?
Torbay Newfoundland. Who's that?
We got.
Let me see, I saw that. Sun Pig, nice handle.
We got Halifax, we got Arizona, Kansas, Eastern Ontario, Jersey, Cape Cod, Louisville, Kentucky. Wow.
Polar vortex is going to get you off.
What is the polar vortex?
Something to do with the weather and storms. Yeah, whatever the polar vortex is, man, it's it's here. It's been a pretty rough, crazy week.
Maryland, Norfolk, England, wow, West Virginia.
Texas, you know, we love our Texas peeps.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh, wait a second.
Home of the Buc-Ee's.
One of you guys said this. I don't I don't have the top name off the top of my head. But look.
The Buc-Ee's Beaver.
It's a Buc-Ee's Beaver. Don't mess with Texas. This will be our kids' first little play toy.
That's the only one. That's the only teddy that our kids are gonna get is that Buc-Ee's. We already decided that.
A little, yeah, a little plush, a little plush bucky.
Fort Murray, Diane McKay, what's up?
I saw Virginia.
Second Newfoundland up there. Cool. Portugal, St. Phillips. No, no Portugal.
Bristol, Tennessee, yeah. Newfoundland.
Lots of new pieces here tonight, boys. Welcome, welcome. Nine hundred ninety-one souls here already.
Yeah.
Love it.
Las Vegas, Germany. Wow, it's so amazing. Isn't it crazy? We can just pop up this phone and connect with all of you guys all over the world, whether it's morning or night, and we're all just like on this earth hurling through space together, just hanging out?
Yeah, it's wild.
Yeah. Thank you guys for being here. This is so cool.
Yes, thank you for being here, people. We love you. We love this. Um, your support, look at the support. Still coming in. Everyone's still telling us where you're from.
Yes, keep it going, keep it going.
Um, yeah. Anyway, yeah, it's been a pretty crazy week out here. It's only Thursday right now, but um, if you've been paying attention to the news or the weather, um, after Hurricane Melissa passed through last week, um, another big system came through here and it was way worse for Newfoundland than Hurricane Melissa was for Newfoundland.
Yes.
Massive high water, high waves. Uh, we took some damage on the house slightly. Um, one of our windows is now boarded over. Um.
My favorite window.
Kelly's favorite window.
Favorite window. So you guys know our buddy Adam Riley, who came over to help us build this kitchen wing. He specifically built a window that would open and I could like lay bread and pies out on this little sill. So naturally, it's my favorite window. And yeah, she got a big crack. Completely side to side. And during the storm, I noticed I was like, something, I hear something. It's off. I don't know what it is. Walked over there. Sure enough, the two panes of glass were starting to like fall apart, basically. So yeah, Maddie had to board it up. So we lost a lot of light in the kitchen too. But thankfully, we didn't lose a window. That would be way worse.
You could see the glass doing this buckling. If you're real quiet, you can hear the houses are creaking right now, the main house, um, because it's blowing right now from northwest. And we thought it was the dogs moving around on the daybed out there and when look, it's just a house.
Yeah.
Quite for one sec. Can you hear the creek? Probably not. Maybe you don't hear the creek, but she's a creaky, wobbly old house out here. Um. Yeah, she's 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 holding in there. We're still here.
Yes, we're safe. We can mark ourselves safe from that storm. And yes, the one that just came through was way worse for us than what we thought from Hurricane Melissa. A lot of us were all worried about that hurricane coming through, but this one that came through was way worse.
We'll be showing you guys some of that on Sunday. Um, a bunch of trails over by Gores Place got washed out. We almost lost a bike. Um, lots of crazy stuff happened and lots of adventures with that storm. It kind of just goes to show that, um, you know, when you're living in somewhere like this, it's not like living in a professionally built house in the suburbs. It's like, oh, a storm, great, whatever. Don't really need to check in. Don't really need to care. Out here, um, it was all hands on deck. Kelly, myself, Patrick, our neighbor. Um, we were shagging around for two days, getting ready for a storm, um, handling the storm. Um. So yeah, it kind of really drives home that where we are. Get ready and whip this blanket in.
Yeah, we were out in the bad weather and our oil skins and rubbers, like, God, must have been eight or nine times that one day. And it was really sketchy out here. I mean, literally the wind could blow you over. It was pretty, pretty nuts.
Someone got stuck in Toronto, Freezy Peach. I was stuck in Toronto. Finally got back to St. John's last night. Welcome back.
Yes, we're glad you're back. Oh, my goodness. Yes, the chickens are okay. The chickens are totally fine. They're smart and they go back in their house when the weather comes.
We did lose a couple of trees in the pig pen.
Yeah.
So glad you guys are doing well. I love the show, Andy. Thank you. Fifty bones. Wow.
Thank you, Andy.
Since we're on that now, um, chat revenue already the chat one hundred ninety-five dollars. If this is your first time being here, we're not asking for you to send that. Uh, we're not encouraging. If you do, God love you. Uh, thank you. Um, everything that's raised in these chats is logged and this is all money for the camp, for the nonprofit. Um, that's what we're doing here. That's what these town halls are for. Sure, we're gonna talk a bit about YouTube stuff and what we're doing out here, answering your questions, but really this is to talk about Camp Scout, um, the charity that Kelly, myself, along with all your help, uh, we're all founding it together. Um, with the idea to reconnect people with nature through community-led experiences and um, knowledge. Simple. Um, youth of today have a big disconnect, not just youth, we all do. Let's get real. We all have a big disconnect with nature. Nature is the free medicine that can cure pretty much everything, you ask me. And uh, we need to try and get back to that. So what what we're gonna do here with this charity is try and reconnect those dots and help as many people, as many youth as we can, get back into nature. Um, and find a passion and just, you know, hopefully helps their life and hopefully helps them get off the the TikToks and the whatever else a little bit and just enjoy their life a bit outdoors. Because you can't have both. We're out here doing what we do. There's a phone there, there's a laptop here, there's cameras out there. As you know, we YouTube, we we use a lot of technology. Uh, we have a starter link to do all this off of. Um, but it does need to consume you. It does need to be an obsession. Um, our phones don't really leave this kitchen. They're pretty much just here. Once we walk out of the kitchen, the phones are gone. Um, so we're lucky like that, but that's what we're doing here. So thank you, everyone who's already sent in, um, some, uh, what do you call them? Super likes. Uh, speaking of that, while running money topic, I'm warmed up now, we're talking.
Yeah, getting the blood flowing.
We do have sixteen hundred and fifty-six members now have signed up for the Camp Scout membership. Um, again, you don't have to do that. We're not gonna, the community has decided that everything that the members get, the public gets, because we don't want to lock people out for the sake of ten dollars. If you can, you don't want to give a ten dollar month, that's fine. You're gonna get everything anyway. But let's just share the numbers that we do have. Sixteen hundred fifty-six members. We just rolled over to our second month. So that means the eight dollars or ten dollars, whatever is charging you per month has come out again. And right now, with our past four live streams and all the chat money that's come in, plus the membership money, right now, we're at seventeen thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars. Five weeks. You guys did that. Congratulations. Um. That's a lot. That's almost twenty grand.
That's a lot.
You know, that's twenty grand. That's almost quarter way to a hundred grand.
Yeah, goodness. Wow, you guys.
I've seen someone ask in the Discord what we're doing with that money. The money is just sitting. It's sitting in the piggy bank. Uh, we're not, it's not gonna be invested. It's not gonna grow. Maybe eventually this thing gets big enough. Maybe we do have some options like that where we can grow it. Right now, we're just holding on to it. Um, no big decisions will be made to spend your money um, on Camp Scout without talking to you guys, letting you know what the plan is. It's all about transparency here. Um, whoever does join up, we do share all the analytics of the money coming in. Um, we want you to feel like you're part of this, because you are. If it wasn't for you on the other side of the screen watching right now, um, this wouldn't happen. Soup Can, thank you. Good handle, by the way. I love it. Uh, sure, I've seen Soup Can here before, that name.
Yeah, I think I saw that last week. I was like, Soup Can, I like that. Jackie, thank you. Amy, ooh, Amy, she sent out five out uh, Scout uh, memberships. So I think that's where it like randomly goes to one of you guys who doesn't currently have a membership and you can just snatch the membership. And uh, yeah, be part of it. So cool you guys can do that. Thank you, Amy. Goodness.
Someone just asked, do we have a link for the nonprofit? Negative. We do not have a link for a nonprofit because don't have a website yet. Uh, we have a domain and all that kind of stuff. I actually just responded to someone's email, a Scout that reached out through, just through the internet, to offer their help and their services to help us build a website. Um, Kelly, myself did have the plans to do the website ourselves. Um, we just can't seem to find the time. Um, as you can imagine, it's uh, there's a lot going on out here just with life. Um.
Yeah. Oh, you can keep going. I was gonna say something after. I was just gonna say, yes, things do get busy, but you know, we'll have like the final overview of everything that actually goes out, so. Also, I just saw, oh, goodness me. Okay. Someone said here, I can't donate currently. I watch as much as I can, always like and share. That is perfect. That's all you need to do.
That's all you gotta do.
Do not feel bad that you cannot give or anything like that. You being here right now, being here on Sundays is the best thing. Really, like, that's all we can ask for essentially. And anything else is just a cherry on top. And we're not expecting you guys to, like even in this chat right now, sending money, like, it's incredible. And thank you so much. This really helps build Camp Scout and all the things that we're gonna do together. But please do not feel pressured or like you have to give. Um.
I'm just watching.
Yes.
Just watching the Sunday videos, that's enough. Um, when it comes to the setup of this um, charity, that's our donation. That's what we're doing. Um, just today, we sent another check um, to the lawyers, five thousand bucks. I guess to set up a a proper charity is quite expensive, actually. Um. Need lawyers, accountants, bookkeepers, all that kind of stuff, a lot of hoo-ha that goes with it. But we are taking this very serious. We are doing it right. We're not cutting corners. Um. I'm sorry, I keep getting caught seeing that these blue things pop up. Um, yeah, that's that's our donation to this. We're we're lighting the fire and we're gonna be looking to you guys to keep that fire going if you still want to do so. And it seems like people do want to. And let me tell you two Scouts, we are making ripples in the world because now we're having some big heavy dogs are starting to reach out to us and they want a part of what you have started. They want a part of Camp Scout. Which brings me to one of my questions for you guys. Um, corporate sponsors. Now, I don't like the word corporate. Hate it. Also, I don't really like the word sponsor, to be honest with you. Um, we've been approached daily, um, on the emails, um, to partner with something and put some product on our YouTube channel on the Sunday video. We don't. We haven't even responded to a single one. Um, but this is a little bit different. Um, we were actually reached out, had a phone call with a representative from a massive power tool company. Um, and they asked what they do to help. And they started throwing some ideas out there. Um, and I told them, I was like, listen, the YouTube, the Scout community online on YouTube, Camp Scout community, they don't want to go corporate, just like I don't want to go corporate. We don't want corporate sponsors. Um, and it's gonna take a whole lot more than free tools to get that. And so they started talking like, okay, well, you know, um, you know, twelve hundred bucks, maybe do twelve hundred, fifteen hundred bucks. It's like, listen. I was like, twelve, fifteen hundred dollars, that's a lot. That's a lot of money. But I was like, that's not gonna be enough to get you guys going, to get you guys on board with this. And they said to me, it's okay, so what do you think? And I said, well, listen, if you really want our community to accept you, accept your offer and make this a thing, you're gonna have to give us a hundred thousand dollars. That's a lot of money. But I really set that bar high, because if anyone is gonna come in here and do that with us, uh, we wanted to bring a high number to the table for you guys, because I don't know what you guys think, um, but if a a tool company came in here and offered Camp Scout a hundred thousand dollars to buy our land, um, and not, not to, you know, we're not gonna, the videos won't change, you know, like with a sponsor like that, well, yeah, we have free tools, a hundred grand to buy the land, uh, maybe put up a few signs and posters and not make it aware, make make people aware that they are helping pay for it, but um, I don't know. What do you guys think? Is that even something we should be considering? That's the only time we've ever had a conversation with any kind of sponsor was these ones, because um, when I seen the name pop up, I mean, I'm not gonna say the name here, but I guarantee you, everybody watching, you know, the tool brand who called. Very serious. Um, so let's go to the comments. Let us know what you think. Now, this isn't a, this isn't a proper deal. This is just conversation between us and another tool company.
Yeah.
Um, let us know what you guys think. What will we use that money for? That would probably be for the land.
Yeah. And also, along with the donation, that number that Maddie spat out, um, they would want to contribute the tools to help build the camp.
Not just the first camp, all the camps.
All the camps. And for e- everyone who's going to be helping using those tools, which I think is pretty great. Um. And yeah, for and for a company that is like a huge, well-known company, that number is not that much, really.
Nothing to them.
It's basically a tax write-off for them. So.
That could be a yearly thing. If we do make a partnership with something like this, um, we make it worth their while, that could be a yearly donation. I mean, that could send a lot of kids to camp. So right now, hold, hold your questions. If you do, if you're typing in the comments, simple yes or a simple no. Let's see it. Let's get some feedback on on should we be accepting or even considering a deal like this, um, for Camp Scout, for us.
Yeah, let's see. Come on, everybody.
Seen lots of yeses. Okay, okay, maybe, yes. We would need to notify and print, of course. Um, we have to do very carefully. A lot of yeses. Can consider it. Okay, yeah. Yes, carefully, of course.
Yep.
Again, we won't make any kind of deal, um, without consulting you. This is all about transparency. We're not out here, um, wearing the boss hat. We're just team members like you guys. This is, we're the ones in front of the camera, because that's how it is, I guess.
Yes. And also, when it does come to sponsors or corporate sponsors or anything of the nature, we would never partner with anybody that we don't believe in.
It's true.
As well.
It's true.
Or actually think is very good. So you can keep that in the back of your minds as well. We would always do something that's the best interest for us and for the camp and for you guys.
Okay, yeah, people sound pretty pretty on board with it. All right, so we'll keep the conversation going with the tool company. Um, it's actually two, two tool companies.
Oh.
Interesting. We've only had a conversation with one.
Yeah.
Um, I threw that number up super high. They started with fifteen hundred. I went right to a hundred thousand dollars because I told them, um, I don't care how big the tool company is. We know what we got here and we know what we have with you, um, at home. And the tool company, they're gonna be lucky to get in on this with us and to have any association with us here.
Yeah.
Um, so that's why the number's so high, because this is special. It really is. Um. This isn't just a normal uh, sponsorship deal for those guys. It would be, you know, a pretty big deal. This is, this is very different. And I just want to bring that up, not necessarily talk about the money or the brand, but just to let you guys know that we're creating waves. Um. People are starting to notice. People are starting to hear what we're trying to do here together. People are realizing how great this online community is by reading the comments. Um, they're going into Discord. They're seeing how nice you guys are all being to each other and to us. Um, and that world, they want a piece of that. And I say we should give it to them, because I'm not a corporate guy either. Um, but.
I think it just plays on how important and how amazing this community is and how what we all want to do here with Camp Scout and the big plans and dreams we have are very attractive to a huge number of people. Huge. I think it's, I think it's so great. And yes, it's not, it's not a quick grab or anything like that. It's uh, just like everything else with this and with our lives, like, it's a long-term plan.
All right, corporate sponsor, that's off the list. Okay, so someone's asked about the website. Is there a link? Um, we are working on a website. We got the domain and all that stuff. Just reached out today to a Scout to help us build the website, because we can't find the time to do it. So the website should soon be up and they'll have, you know, more detailed information on what we're trying to do here. There's only so much we can convey through uh, these, you know, these calls. Um, but we need that. We need the website help. Uh, the lady today that emailed you back, please return my email because you seem like you'd be perfect for it. Um, a lot of the help that we are getting for this is coming right from here, right from this, from the internet. Um, we've already got, where's our team members? I'm not gonna say the full name. Uh, we got a guy named Jay and we got a guy named Chance. And those two are just Scouts right from the internet. And those two guys are right now, they're running the Discord. Uh, if you haven't heard, we do have a Discord channel going now. If you haven't heard Discord, don't feel bad. I never did either. Um, basically, just a big chat room. Great. Um, there is like over four hundred Scouts over there now, daily. You can message each other, talk back and forth with each other. Um, you guys can turn your cameras on too. Uh, we turned it on once, uh, our cameras, and we're there sitting here in the kitchen and some girl over in the UK, uh, Matilda, she's there. We could see her. The very first time we could see a Scout.
Yeah.
Through the internet, uh, was on Discord. So if you want to, go over to Discord, Discord link, please. Uh, mhm. Can someone, is Jay or someone in here? Rick O'Brien. Oh, yeah, my boy. We'll get you the link.
Yes.
Someone put a link in here, boys. We can't get out of this. Matilda, great name, I know. I love the name Matilda, too.
I know. It is really, really sweet.
But yeah, um. Go over and check it, check out the link, get the link. Someone will send you the link. But anyway, um, Jay and and uh, Chance, thank you, because they're doing a great job over there. Um, also, uh, young man named Chris from Ireland, a Scout, reached out to us, offered their help. He is a graphic designer and he's currently working on the logos for Camp Scout. And we've already had two hour-long meetings about it. He's got a bunch of drawings done up. A lot of real good stuff drawn up. I hope to be able to show you that stuff here tonight. Uh, we just downloaded some software for streaming so that we can do more than just see us. We can share uh, screens. We can uh, share information on your screen there. Hopefully next week we'll have that figured out. I didn't have time to learn it today, between everything else we did out here. Uh, but soon we'll be able to show you right here on these live chats, um, like the designs that Chris is working on. The Camp Scout or Scout Outdoors merchandise, uh, just come off the press.
Yes.
The hoodies and shirts, I think, just finished today. They're finishing the hats. So hopefully by next week, um, we'll be selling merch.
Yeah, guys.
And it's not, it's not gonna be any Camp Scout merch yet, because Chris, the designer, is still working on the logo and designs for shirts and hats and all that kind of stuff. Once we get there, we'll have Camp Scout merch too. That's just Scout Outdoors stuff.
Yes.
I mean, the second best, just next best thing to Camp Scout.
Yeah, and we're really excited for Chris, the designer, to uh, finalize the designs and stuff. And we really wanted a real artist to make these shirts and these designs, because as you guys know, so much of what you see is like AI and I mean, it's cool, but also at the same time, like, there's real humans who can do incredible work. And you got, like, you guys are them, really.
Yeah, you're them.
Yeah, you guys are those humans. And so we want to be able to support you. And you guys have all these wonderful ideas that, I mean, I could never come up with all these ideas on my own, like drawing. I can't even draw really, but yeah, you guys have lots of stuff. Um, that is so useful. So, yeah, that's why it's taking a wee bit longer. Um, because we want real art, you know.
Art, powerful thing.
It is.
It really is. And also, after talking to Chris, I was like, yeah, at Camp Scout, we definitely need to do some art programs, art out in nature. Also, making music out in nature at Camp Scout. Why not incorporate music, uh, with some of the programs at Camp Scout? We're talking about Camp Scout. This might be some people's first time. We always need to assume some people have never been here before.
Yes.
Uh, real quick, I'll sum it up. What we're trying to do here is we're building a community together. We're pooling our funds together. Um, and we're trying to purchase a piece of land, a raw piece of land, where we're then gonna ask for your help or whoever wants to come help us. We'll bring the video camera so we show it on Sunday videos. And we're gonna go in there together. We're gonna build ourselves, uh, a real nice little campground, real natural feeling, real simple, just a dirt parking lot, one little town hall in the middle, then just some tent sites. Uh, and we're gonna use that place to run workshops, um, host, uh, or leave exhibitions from. Um, and also just have a place where people can go and learn and experience nature for free. Because the cost of just putting up a tent in the campground is sickingly, sickingly, is that right? Sickingly.
Sickeningly.
Sickeningly.
That's not it either.
Expensive.
Way too high, way too high.
Forty bucks, forty bucks to put in a tent. That's ridiculous. Um, forty bucks plus everything else adds up. You may as well just go to town and get a hotel room. You know, people want to go in nature, but a big holdback for a lot of people is the cost to get out and try new experiences of nature and also the knowledge and access to the knowledge. A lot of people don't know someone to go teach them how to use chainsaw or teach them how to mountain bike or sea kayak or or whatever it is.
Or to start a fire.
Start a fire, simple stuff. Some people have no one to reach out to to do that. If they do want to learn it, they gotta go pay an instructor, you know, quite a bit of money, I'm sure, um, to learn. I had to do that. Um, I got into rock climbing years and years ago. And when I started rock climbing, I had no connections to rock climbing. I had no friends, um, at all who rock climbed. I just wanted to do it. So what I had to do, I went out to BC, um, Squamish, BC, any fucking, ooh. When I get excited, I drive it fast.
I had to have one, I guess.
Uh, went to DC and I had to pay a a rock climbing instructor and did a couple courses. And it wasn't cheap. Luckily, I was working on oil riggs and I had no wife or kids, so I could swing it, but it wasn't cheap. Um, not everyone can do that. So that's where Camp Scout comes in.
You guys are so funny.
Twenty-one hundred forty-six Scouts here right now, boys. That's wild. That's a lot of people. Six hundred and four dollars and five cents.
Twenty-one hundred of you guys in our kitchen right now. That's a lot of people in our kitchen.
That's wild.
Yeah, gosh, you guys are awesome.
Yes. Will you have insurance? Yes.
Yeah.
A very important part of this whole thing is insurance. I've had some people tell me, you won't be able to do it. You can't do something like this. Um, you won't be able to get insurance for it. And my response to that is, have you ever seen any of these videos of whitewater rafting, the tour ones? If a whitewater rafting company, which there's thousands of them, if they can get insurance to bring total strangers down a high-flow river through rapids, we can get insurance too. Don't worry about that. It's just a money thing. If you're, if we can pay for it, we can get insurance. No question asked, for sure.
That's very true.
Yeah. Is your house insured?
No.
We could not get this place insured if we tried. They wouldn't do it. They would not do it.
They take a look and like, uh-uh.
No, this place is not insurable. Um, there's no insurance.
And that's okay. We're fine with that.
Um, got a good question here from the Discords. Are you making, okay, are you making a decision with the application process? Smokey Mountain Girl, nice handle.
Yeah, I love that.
Yes, let's talk about that, Smokey Mountain Girl. Um, we are still doing the application process. As we said last week, we're looking for board members. Um, we had two interviews this week. Which just reminds me, uh, shoot, we missed it. We had one lined up for today. Actually, Heather, if you're watching, I'm sorry. Um, like it was a crazy day. It got away from us. We were supposed to have a call with Heather today for potential board member. And Heather, what was Heather's background? So I got the background of everybody here, too. In my crazy, messy notes.
Yes.
If you guys see my notebooks, you're like, oh, my God, who is this guy?
Oh, my gosh, you guys should see the amount of doodles he does while he's on calls. It's actually amazing.
Where is this? Dang.
It's somewhere in here.
Cause I got some notes on a few of the board members. Okay, here we go. Okay, I can't find others.
Notes, birds, scribbles, I love it. Yes, Maddie and I, you guys say you love that he has a notebook, yes, we both went out and got a little composition notebook to keep our minds straight. And writing them every morning, most every morning, which has been fairly helpful, trying to organize our thoughts and organize our days.
That's what my notebook looks like.
I don't know if you can see it, but it is crazy.
Oh Kyle Snow, brother. Kyle Snow, brother from another mother, brother.
That's right.
Love that guy. Here he is again.
I love it, oh my gosh, I can hear it from now, I can hear it from here.
So yes, Heather, apologies, we missed our appointment, we'll reschedule that, um we are still looking for board members, yes. I always thought uh the board members for, like I've been dreaming of this for a long, long time, years and years, I always pictured the board. I'm just meeting a few buddies, like that guy Kyle Snow that was just there, just me and a few of the boys, that's all we need for board members, right? No, that's not what you need for a board members, board members, I guess, is a lot more than just someone who votes on stuff, you need. Professionals um with expertise, because those board members are the ones that's gonna get stuff done. We're only two people out here and our day is very consumed with making these videos, building this house, just staying afloat out here. Um and then all the background stuff that we're doing here for Camp Scout takes up any bit of extra time. So the board members are people that are gonna do stuff, like you need one board member, um who's dedicated to just. Volunteer applications, finding volunteers to help run the, the camp, need someone else who's working on the insurance. Need another board member who's just sniffing out land, working on grants, getting free money for us. Um so I've since learned, my boy Richard O'Brien.
What up, Rich?
What up, Rich? We need seven to nine board members, that's what a professional would suggest, so right now we're at one, two, three. We're at, we're at three, for sure, we got two.
Are you counting us?
Two of us, our, one of our boy, um and we got two more who are, in my mind, they're good to go. But something we've also learned, we can't just take people's word for it, we can't just have a couple of phone calls, like, oh yeah, great, send me your resume, oh, resume looks good. I don't know what a good resume looks like, but even if I did, it's more than that, since we're dealing with uh a charity here. We're dealing with youth, these people need to be vetted, uh which comes back to us another cost, we're actually right now. Um in contact with a couple of security companies or, I don't even know how, I guess they're security companies. That do background checks, um so we have to pay a third-party company to background check potential board members. So if you are sending us emails with the subject title, board member application, know that if you are. Making it through the steps, um and you are gonna come on the board, you're gonna be a full, proper background check, just like some massive company would do for you. Before you went to work for them, because we have to, we're trying to build something big here, this isn't some rinky-dink. Um charity that, you know, we're gonna run it here on the island, we want this to be big, this is gonna go on for decades. Wouldn't always be us here doing it, hopefully it is, but in my mind, we get dropped dead tomorrow offshore somewhere. And someone else can pick up a torch, those board members can just keep on going and non-stop, um because there's a lot of people out there that need a lot of help. Times are getting crazier, um the world is crazier than it ever has been, um it's a dog-eat-dog world out there and life is tough. And nature is one of those places I do think that we can get a lot of comfort from, and there's a lot of. Things that you benefit from in nature for free. You really can, if you have the experience or knowledge or just the balls to get out and try it on your own, you can get a lot out of nature. Maddie, Kyle here, reach out if you need something simple thing can do. Hey, Littlefoot, I know that name, Kyle Perrow, what is it? He's my best friend back in grade, all through elementary, really. Yeah, Littlefoot, my boy, I'm telling you, brother. Kyle Perrow, boy, Kyle's nosy, dude. All the new fees here, this is great. Um yeah, so we need more board members, so if you do wanna be on the board. Um it's a serious thing, we're not playing around here, we are looking for not knuckle draggers like myself. We need knuckle draggers, the world is built by knuckle draggers, let's get that clear first of all, but. The knuckle draggers will have their time when we build a camp, we need the white-collar folk now. The white-collar folk that are just gonna be up there doing their white-collar work. Uh and making this camp a reality on paper, doing the legal stuff, doing insurance stuff and keeping this thing on track. The knuckle draggers like myself and all you out there, we'll build the thing, okay, so we do need your help for sure. But if you are a white-collar professional, ideally, we're looking for people that have some experience with nonprofits, really, we need one person. That has a lot of experience with nonprofits, setting them up, running them, whatever. And we need that person to run it, right now, we got my boy, our boy Richard. Belle Island boy for all you new fees, I know it'd be great to have a fellow new fee on the board, he's not in Belle Island anymore, but. He'd be great, and our other one is Dan. Um my, our keynotes here for Rich, Belle Island man, he's retired, which is great, cause he had lots of free time to help. He's been in finance for years, he's already on boards for other things, he volunteers, and he's cool up being on the livestream. So he could come on here as a guest sometime and talk to you guys, because we do like the idea of all you at home knowing who your board is. Your board director, all you know is us right now, I love it. For our board directors, Bill, come on here with us and give a presentation, talk about what's happening, um so he's cool to do that. Dan, same thing, Dan is good to go for being on live streams, he's a safety guy right now. He's worked with YMCA as a director for years and he's a father, great, great, you know, that's the kind of people we need. So if you wanna join, send an email, camp, camp@scoutoutdoors.com. Subject, board member application, give us all your deets, um your resume. Um or just give your details, if we, we talk back and forth, then we'll get your resume, we're also gonna want. Uh some social media links if you have them, if not, just some pictures, this was advice from a smart person told us to do this. Ask for some pictures from the board directors, just cause picture kinda really shows who someone is and what kind of, who they are and what kind of life they're living. Uh their friends or family, whatever. Say something, girl, I've been, I've been talking ten minutes.
Yes, I know, I know you do, you do. Let's see, buddy. I know, I've seen lots of questions about the baby names, oh my goodness gracious, y'all.
Okay, I'm, I'm still on Cooler, Cooler Clark. Can I get some love for Cooler?
Guys, don't give it to him. Flipping baby Cooler, all I'm gonna think about is Coleman and Yetis and Ice in a Box.
Ooh, I like that.
Gord Clark, oh my god.
Oh, Dan Miller, is that Dan?
River Clark, that's cute.
Patty Clark. Puddy Clark, Puddy Clark is cool. Cooler, oh my god, no, come on, Michael, help me out here, brother. That's my favorite name, Bobby Sue and Cooler. Briar.
Oh my goodness, Kevin.
Stay on track here, Kelly Lord, you getting, getting bogged in the weeds here.
You talked for ten minutes, boy. Oh my gosh, wow, you guys are coming up with lots of.
Gordon Downey.
Stanley.
Joseph Clark.
Oh my gosh, oh, that's cute.
Milwaukee Clark.
Milwaukee, come here, Mill.
Come here, Millie.
Come here, Walkie.
Scody, hey, we should name the first kid Scout.
Oh my gosh.
Imagine. I mean, I'm gonna call him Scout all the time anyway.
It would work, it would work.
That's how you use the word, anyone does know, that's how you use the word scout, scout is someone, really, the definition of scout. Is to push, pull, toil, work hard. Or, you know, I mean, I can say another version. Uh but you also can use it to talk, talk with people, we always use it to talk to each other, let's go, let's go, look at this young scout, look at this dumb scout.
Actually, what's funny, when we first got together, you'd always call Ronnie and be like, Sco, Sco, but you're saying let's go, but like. Sco, like S-N-G-O, and I was like, is he saying scout all the time? But no, you're just like, yeah, no.
We're talking to this Ronnie?
No, not Kyle. Stevie Scout, oh, that's cute, yeah, you guys, wow, you guys have lots of baby names, oh my goodness, goodness gracious.
Uh that could be a fundraising idea right here for Camp Scout, we sell the naming rights.
You got jokes, you got jokes, is there a PO box? Yes, uh I'll say it right now, but if you want to know after this video, after this live, just go to our about. Page on the channel, on the YouTube channel, it is. Maddie is nervous because there's lots of packages and he's not a big fan of the, of the things stacking up.
I'm a big fan of the love. There's a lot of great stuff. Um it's to find the time, like, cause Kelly, Kelly, she gotta go to the post office, she gotta pick it up, she had to bring it home in truck. Put it aboard the boat, bring it home, I gotta unload it all. Bring it on the house, stored in this house somewhere, there's nowhere to store it, and then Kelly's gotta sit down, she opens them up and then writes a letter to everyone, which is great. It's great, um and we so much appreciate it, we do, Kelly really does. For me, it's just a little bit of a, I, I used to like to think I was a minimalist, or you, I wanted to be a minimalist and. Kelly, my god, she gonna lumber, take every bit of it if she could.
Yeah, and I have to say, I am way behind on a bunch of stuff. Uh particularly those packages and getting your letters out to you guys, I got a big old stack up in my little. Art studio upstairs, the room, the desk that I have them all up there in, but. I'll tell you anyway, I'm trying to get on it, believe me, I am. Uh it's PO box twenty-twenty-six, Marystown, Newfoundland, AOE two MO, Canada.
Man, we're brave people, aren't we, just sending your PO box out to. The world, the internet, I mean, people have reached out to us before, like, my god, do you guys really have no fear, do you? Share all, I mean, I guess we don't, we're pretty old people, and we do trust the world, we're very trusting.
Plus, you guys are amazing and just to like. Oh my god, no. We won't open your package, buddy, uh no, to see that, you know, how much time it takes for you guys. Like a lot of the stuff we, we get is like handmade items, which I know as an artist takes so long and so much effort, energy, planning. And commitment, let alone to make it, write a letter, package it up, all perfectly and cute, like a Christmas gift. Ship it off and pray that she makes it. And yeah, you guys just do it over and over again, so I'm blown away and it's my favorite thing to write the letters back. Just to give like another touch point to you guys, like pen pals, I think it's great, does it get overwhelming? Yes, it does get overwhelming, there's lots of letters I have not responded to, but. I will get to them, don't worry, if you get a letter back like three months back dated, I'm really sorry, but it's possible. It's quite possible.
A lot of stuff you guys are starting to see around here, that's where it's coming from, it's coming from you guys, just like these mugs. These mugs came from here, that Bucky's Beaver back there came from there. Those little figurines back there, the thing right there.
Teapots.
Teapots, those teapots.
Yeah, uh what else?
That teapot.
Pot holders for like our skillets to help my hands, lighters, like the long ones.
This came from Japan. A lady from Japan, just think of this for a second, this thing started off in Japan, a lady went and boxes up. Mailed it to Canada, shipped it, and it went from, uh where was it? Okinawa, Japan, and now it's sitting in this old Ricky Hacks in Saint Joseph, Newfoundland, tell me how wild the world is. That's wild, and we, we use it all the time.
Yes, that's like my ultimate uh pregnancy tea, I love mixing up my early morning matcha tea in that one, so thank you so much if you're watching.
Kent Clark, love it.
That actually is pretty cute, never was a big fan of the name Kent, like, but I, I like that.
Well, Kent Clark, she doesn't even know, Superman.
Yes, no, I, I know. Oh, he spelled Cooler different, K-O-U-L-A-R, that's not too bad.
Boy, they're still going to names.
Oh my god, I know, we got an A-A Ron, August Clark, that's cute.
Seen A-A Ron twice.
Oh, really?
Mug Clark.
Walter.
Are you going to buy a TV? Hell no.
No, that's why we go to Gourds, we play Guitar Hero over at Gordy's house.
Rarely, la- last time I played Guitar Hero at Gourds was.
Yeah, months ago.
Yeah, our buddy Bob was here. We don't really need a TV, and not that we're anti-TV, we love movies, I love movies, always have. Laptops, that's enough for us, um when we do wanna watch a movie or show, laptop. You know, it's like a mobile TV, it's great.
We can watch in the kitchen, we can watch in the room, it's nice, but when the baby does come, we have like decided we're gonna have to change. Our ways so that there's not a TV playing while the baby's sleeping and like has that stimuli or whatever. So it'll be books, I'm sure it'll be books, and we can read to each other, that'd be fun. Get some spicy books, I'm just kidding. Gord, oh, someone said, I think Gordy Patrick Clark, that's cute.
Right, alright, Kelly, you and the names.
They're just going, they're going.
Timber Clark, no, no, lead, who's that, Les Johnson? I like it, Timber Clark, and that's on the top, that's like a Cooler and a Timber.
Yeah, so many baby boy names, I just realized, someone said, we're all getting boy names, yeah, come on.
It's gonna be a boy.
Are you guys all Team Boy?
Yes, we're Team Boy.
I wanna see a girl out here hacking stuff with a chainsaw, well, you know.
I'm gonna carry the torch.
Yes, yes.
You know, that's a boy, like it passed away tomorrow and this will all go on, like nothing ever changed.
Yamaha Clark, oh my goodness.
I like that.
Yeah, no, we're super excited, yeah, we don't know if it's a boy or a girl, so it'll be interesting to see.
Alright, Kelly, you gonna show them the bump? Better not.
Do you guys wanna see the bump?
Yami Clark again, I like the Yami Clark.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Our pet's allowed at the camp, I seen that today on the Discord too, actually, good question. I wanna say yes, um we're, if he wants to the bump. Let's finish this question first, um we're animal people, we're pet people, of course, I'm able to bring animals. I don't know how to navigate that really, cause you think about it, like you can't have dogs run wild in the campground. You have some people, especially around here, it's kinda first time I've been somewhere, Saint Joseph's and the people from around here. A lot of people around here scared of dogs, straight up scared of dogs, um and not just like, oh, I don't like dogs, like scared. Um so that's the thing, I think leash on with your animals, can't see why that'd be a problem, right? I can't see us being able to let the dogs just run wild over camp, maybe have a special area for them, but. Yeah, I think yeah.
I'd like to have dogs, plus also a lot of people travel with their dogs, like we go everywhere with our dogs.
See, I'm terrified of dogs, Michelle, see?
Maybe there could be like a dog section. Okay, I'll show you guys the bump. Yes, guys.
Keep it classy, Kelly Lord, there's twenty-four hundred people here, god.
I know, okay, so just to let everyone know, I'm like a day shy of nineteen weeks pregnant. So, let's see where we're at. That's a pretty freaking little belly there, oh, oh my gosh.
That's a big whopper, brother.
I never get to see it, actually, like I hardly get to see it in full light.
We don't have any mirrors.
We don't have any mirrors.
We got one now.
It's like this big.
Small one, yeah.
It's very small, there you go, go ahead and touch the bump.
Me?
Yeah, who else am I talking to? Okay, alright, I love that, I love that, showing my skin, I'll tell everyone.
It's amazing, people like the bump, some people like the bump, I'm, I'm assuming they're all women, mostly women.
Yeah, girls, yeah, the girls. Yes, this is the third scout right here.
Scody Clark.
Little Cletus, someone said Cletus, Maddie likes that one.
I love Cletus personally.
Oh my gosh.
Uh it's a girl sometimes, yeah, you guys wanna try something interesting in your house, take it to mirrors. Living a life without mirrors, god, it's good, it's great, and it sounds just very funny, cause. Uh my dad were going to town before and just going to the gas station and going. Uh, my bad for going to town before and just going to the gas station and going to take a leak in the gas station bathroom, and looking in the mirror like, oh, lord. I haven't seen myself in two weeks and, uh. For better or for worse, but it's, it's very interesting when you do it to yourself, cause you start to assume. What you look like through day to day, what you're doing, oh, yeah, I wear my good shirt now, I must be looking good, you know, and like, you have no idea.
Oh, gosh, I used to spend lots of time in front of a mirror when I lived in Virginia, I had many mirrors, long mirrors, I could check all my outfits out. Yeah, now I never do that, now I wear the same clothes for like four days straight.
Cletus the fetus.
Goldenberry, you got me, that's so funny, oh, my gosh. Yeah, we'll get back to our regular scheduled program here. Yeah, go on, go on, honey.
Uh, time's flying by, my lord, it's already fifty one minutes.
My goodness gracious, thank you guys for all the sweet comments.
Yeah, it's so good.
Your sweater is beautiful, thank you, you wouldn't imagine, I got this when I first got here at the Salvation Army for three dollars. Three dollars. It blows me away.
Oh, they're both sets of mountain pop of smoke, um, twenty five hundred and four Scouts here right now, people, thank you. Jake Smith, thank you, power tool company supplying tools for all Camp Scouts is very valuable, hopefully you can work with me, it would be huge, hundred percent.
Thank you, Jake.
We are at six hundred and twenty nine dollars and thirty cents right now in this chat. Don't have any pressure, not asking for anyone to do that, everyone who is, God love you and thank you, going directly into the fund. Um, we got a question here from our Discord, cause Discord is a great place to get these questions, we have a. A whole thread on Discord asking what your questions are, suggestions for these town halls, Forager three thousand. Had this question, what is the main goal for Scout right now? Good question, um, in my mind, a lot of ideas on that, what is the main goal right now today, in my mind is finding a team. We need a team, we have the community here, we're all here together, you guys are all here, it's twenty five hundred people here. Um, we have the community and it's getting bigger by the day, but we need a team, because to run something as big as this. Um, it takes a lot more two people, and also, we don't have the skill set to really run the backend of this thing. Sure, we can be out there, we can be your eyes and ears for everyone at home, we can bring the camera there and show you what's going on. And we can be out there like, you know, leading the charge somewhat, in, uh, boots in the ground, when it comes to the background stuff. All the paperwork, all the insurance, the legal, all that, we need professionals for that, so it's the team, that's the most important part right now, is team. That's why we're asking for board member applications, that's why we're asking for people to wanna build a website, um, and whatever else we can find. Out of the community, um, team is a big one, and next, I think just awareness, I think you guys all. Going home through your day to day, um, going to work, going wherever you go, and just telling people about what we're doing here, tell them that, yeah. You, don't say us, you say you, you're helping start, uh, a charity, a nonprofit, um, and. A charity that's unlike any other, one that's powered directly through you, but also one that's fully transparent. You're not gonna donate your five bucks, you know, at the, some, some. Charity at the, at a grocery store, at, you know, you know, a grocery store has got a, people set a table and they're raising money for whatever it is, great, God love them. But you give them that five bucks, and that five bucks is gone, you have no idea what happened with that. This is different, cause you're gonna see it, we're gonna keep you updated, like this, um, like the Discord. With the Sunday videos, we're gonna show it all, you're not gonna miss anything, and also, the goal here is to not get bogged down in administrative costs. Normally, on a normal nonprofit or a charity, the majority of the money goes to just keeping this machine alive. This is different, because this is powered through YouTube, through internet, this is a frictionless machine, we don't need to get bogged in admin fees. We're donating the admin fees, right? All your donations are going directly from you, passing through Camp Scout bank account and. Straight to the kid or the old guy that needs it, that needs help, that wants to get out in the woods and, and. Better themselves and better their community. Um, next up, that'd be finding land, um, and then all the legal jargon, um, the legal stuff is a real mother effort. Um, there's a lot to it, a lot to it, um, it's a slow process. Someone else also asked, um, what's our timeframe for a nonprofit designation? I'd say probably ten months from now, I would guess, um, that's kind of what we're hearing from the, the legal people, um, it's gonna take a while to do that. Yep, freaking red tape, you know, yep, Turd Ferguson, nice, nice handle too, there's a lot of red tape, but we wanna do this right. Um, there's a lot at stake here, you know, we're not, we're not squandering your support and opportunity that we have here. By just willy nilly in this whole thing, we're taking this very serious, and it's gotta be done right, do it once, we build a good foundation. We get that good team, that good board members on place, we've got the legal, the accountants, the bookkeepers, all that together, little. Core team of white collar people, um, and then us here with the camera, and all of you, this can work. And we can do it, so that's, that's what we need.
That's right.
Cole Clark, definitely not.
Oh, my goodness.
Someone else suggested, should we do a newsletter? Um, that's actually a pretty good idea, I think someone in Discord came up with the idea. Um, to do a monthly newsletter, where, you know, you could sign up, uh, through the website or whatever. And we could do a little write up a paragraph each month or a couple pages, whatever, uh, yeah, figure time. Pregnancy pee. Yeah, do a newsletter where we're gonna share, you know, the, the nuts and bolts of what's actually happening out here. If you're real quiet, we can't hear a pee, she's using her piss bucket right now.
Matt, stop.
It's too sto- it's too stormy for it to go outside and pee. You better make some sounds, cause they can hear it. Will a charity have its own YouTube channel? Um, no, the charity will not have its own YouTube channel, because there's not gonna be enough there. To be a repetitive weekly thing, there's gonna be lots going on there, but. Uh, we're not gonna be filming, or, or someone is not gonna be filming everything that happens, um. That goes on a camp scope, cause think, but if you're coming to Camp Scout for a workshop, um, you're a kid, you're a family coming out there for whatever you're coming out there for. You don't, you don't wanna be on camera, maybe you do, but most people don't want to, you just wanna be able to enjoy it, um, having the camera here is great. But from someone with quite a bit of experience filming themselves in the woods. Isolate in the woods, have been all over the place with a camera in the woods, mostly alone, it does change things slightly. Um, a lot of ways is great, because like you're Wilson, you're castaway, it's like you're, you're a little therapist that you talk to. You look in that land, you just talk to, you're comfortable talking to it, it's like a diary, but it does take away. From the experience, it does, it can, you, you, it's not as natural, it's not as pure, so no, it won't have its own YouTube channel.
Yeah, plus we want you guys to have your privacy and you guys to just be able to enjoy yourselves at Camp Scout. It's not gonna be like a big old documented thing, the building of it, yes, of course, that's gonna be really fun to document, but the day to day. I don't think so, no, especially not on channel or anything.
Should we do newsletter, should we do newsletter, boys, can we get a yes or a no for a newsletter, just get a quick vote going here? Do you guys want a monthly newsletter emailed you? Patrick, ye. Ye again. Yes, sir, yes, sir, okay, we'll pencil that in.
You're so funny, three seconds, yeah, let's go.
Newsletter's in.
Yeah, I'll see, we're sounding guesses, let's go, my son, love it. Yeah, I love it.
Well, so, we gotta know. Or who's that no?
Yeah, who, who said no?
So much work, too much work, hmm. I mean, it's more work, sure.
Yeah, it does more work.
But again, the newsletter is something that the board of directors can help with, it doesn't have to be us, um.
And it could probably just be like a sweet and short little bullet point, here's the progress of this month, here's what we're looking forward to coming up, here's what we could use help with.
You don't need to do it, I mean, if you, if I was on that side, someone asked me, do I wanna newsletter, hell, no, I don't want a newsletter. I'm not a newsletter guy, I never have been, um, I got no interest in reading emails with any information, um. I would be happy with this, with the live stream, which is the videos, get my information through that, so don't feel bad if you don't want a newsletter. I'm not a newsletter guy either, so. Yes, okay, we'll still do it, there's a lot, yes, so we will do the newsletter, we'll get that underway. It won't be next week or anything, but, um, we'll get the wheels turning on that, okay? Um, another good idea that someone had, this isn't camps, I mean, it's, we'll do under Camp Scout, this doesn't have to be at the camp. Um, as you know, there's multiple ideas with Camp Scout, we got the physical camp, um, that we can run and have. Uh, workshops there and bring people there and events and, and all that good stuff, also, we got the Camp Scout Charter Program. Where you at home can, um, go through the application process, become an official Camp Scout Charter Club. Start your own club in your community for you and your friends, or you and your students, you and your kids, whatever it is. We'll send you guys uniforms, material to run off of, an ethos to run off of, send you free equipment and gear. If you need training, because you don't know how to do something, we'll pay for the training, the camp will pay for the training. That's all under this realm, but another great idea came in here from Discord, optimistic procrastinator. Probably the best handle I've seen on there, um, cause.
Same.
I was like, that's us, we're very optimistic, we're procrastinators, um, a gear lending library. Um, everyone has seen those little free libraries that people got around in the city, you know, you take a book, leave a book kind of thing. Something like that, but for equipment, for gear, for, for, uh, camping stuff, for outdoor supplies. There's a lot of people out there with a lot of extra equipment that don't use. Um, laying around the basement, I'm sure be happy to donate it, there's a lot of companies out there that would be more than happy. To give us some free equipment, uh, if we stop, put their sticker on something, or whatever it was. Um, and basically have a place where someone could reach out to us and they come and get, get equipment, get free gear, you know? I remember being a kid and I wanted to get into kayaking, I never had a kayak, I never had any money to buy a kayak, I never got into kayaking. Uh, if there was a place where I could've got a free kayak for a couple weeks, maybe the whole life would be different now.
Well, don't look at me like that.
But a gear lending library.
Yeah.
We have equipment library in my town, it's invaluable, see, it was a Ibroski.
That's really cool.
Yeah, yeah, yes, I want a kayak so bad, can I have a kayak?
Yes, that's right.
I have endless ideas, send the ideas, baby, if you really wanna help get the ideas across, people get on the Discord. I'm telling you, that's where we're really chatting back and forth with each other, not just us, but all the Scouts are just sharing your pictures. There's a thread with a bunch of cat pictures, people are sending cat pictures.
Like cats in Halloween costumes, it's awesome, we're cats into Christmas stuff, I wanna know, it sounds really funny. But did anybody dress up as us for Halloween?
Uh, let me see if I can find this Discord link. Hang on, people, let me find this Discord link, stand by.
Stand by, stand by.
Okay, how do we? Add friend, invite people, how do we do this, see, I, I don't even know, um, uh.
Yeah.
How do you invite people?
I don't know. Oh, no, all, all the sounds. Oh. This is why we love our, uh, admins here, he just popped that up, sent it to us in a message.
Yeah, there you go, I'm gonna put it in the chat right now, peeps.
Okay, it's going down in the chat.
That's Discord link, there you go.
Boom.
Click it, get in there, our boy Chance, our boy Jay is over there running right now with the record, she looking for more moderators. Uh, they're, they're taking that thing and running with it, we're not running Discord at all, we're in there, we're talking back and forth too. Uh, but Jay and, uh, Chance are taking it and, and leading it right now, so it's great, they, they, they're asking for more help also. Wilderness First Aid would be great, I agree, Gabby, Wilderness First Aid would be great, that's an expensive course to do, Wilderness First Aid. Um, and again, these are the kind of things that we could do there, um, and we could probably get Wilderness First Aid Workshop going, probably for free. Uh, with some kind of partnership, with some kind of outfit that does it, um, you know, there's lots of ways to get a lot of stuff. For this camp, for nothing, you know?
So they can't click the link, it needs to be blue.
Oh, really? Can you click the link, doesn't it work?
Oh, maybe buddy sent a message.
Copy link, okay, okay, I got it, I got it, I got it, I got it. Okay, here it comes again, peeps.
Let's try again.
Hope that one works. Yeah, put Discord in profile information, we will, we'll do that. Okay, well, no, it didn't work, I guess it didn't work, whatever, oh, it works, great, it works.
Great.
There you go.
Lovely, lovely.
Get in there, peeps, uh, great spot to really get information across, um, like the gear lending library, I love the gear lending library. That's something that we could totally have at the front, uh, entrance of Camp Scout number one. Every Camp Scout, we could have a lending library, not just for the campers, for just locals or for tourists to drive through, like, oh, let's go get a couple mountain bikes. Go grab them from Camp Scout, why not?
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Twenty one hundred and seventy four people here right now, seven hundred and ten dollars.
Good lord, y'all.
So that brings us into a quick, quick math here.
Is that across eighteen?
Over, over eighteen thousand dollars now, that's a lot, eighteen thousand dollars, every month it goes on, it goes up higher and higher and higher. We're getting more and more members, um, over sixteen hundred members now, which is absolutely amazing.
We're that much closer to Scoutland, guys.
We're getting close.
That's awesome, well, we had a question, we saw lots of questions about, uh, Cape Millie. Where's Cape Millie, do we still have Cape Millie, Cape Millie is the big blue boat, you guys see a lot of the speedboat nowadays. Um, but yeah, Mr. Scout, you want to answer that one?
We still got Cape Millie, um, she's down in Lower Harbor right now, she's moored off down there on her anchor, um, she's been with us this whole time. You haven't seen her a whole lot lately, cause we've been so cooped up in the house, just building this house and trying to get everything weather tight. Um, but the time is coming for her again, s- once this house is complete, as it's gonna be this winter. We're gonna go back into logging mode, we're gonna start cutting logs, cutting more firewood, uh, milling lumber. Um, that's when we'll start using Cape Millie again, she's a great boat for that, hauling loads of logs and lumber around.
Yeah.
Um, is your generator running, you tell me, can you hear that? It is.
That's crazy.
The generator is running, that's the fifth time that we've started that generator since we got the solar system.
Yeah.
It's been a really dirty day here, no juice at all, um, yeah, generator is running.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah. No, is it eighteen grand after you take the script, no, that's eighteen grand in your pocket, we have that, that's, that's here. That's not, YouTube will take, cut that, that's it, that's all here. I can hear Jenny, okay. Good, anyway, um, yeah. Last thing here, my, my last note, just talk about what's really going on out here, um, you know? I know it's really easy to watch the internet, watch YouTube, including us out there, out here, um. Have a bachelor party in Cape Millie?
Wait, you had your bachelor party on the Cape Millie?
Here on Brian Berkeley, who was Dave.
We were literally talking about having a wedding party on the back of Cape Millie the other day, and that'd be pretty cool. Oh, my gosh, yeah, Gary, what do ladies think, do they want a matte lumberjack calendar? If we're doing that, we're doing Kelly in the kitchen too.
No. Um, but yeah, I just wanna say again, um, or not say again, but talk about the real life. Probably really easy to watch these videos, and not just our videos, all videos, all the YouTube, all the bullshit on social media. The stuff on TV and Netflix, um, even stuff like this, most of the stuff you see is the good stuff. We are trying to let you guys in more and trying to be more and more real and show you guys the downs with the ups. Um, and this week was one of those weeks where it's been a pretty rough week, um, today, actually, it was a pretty rough. Couple hours this afternoon, um, both of us having some real internal struggles, um. Me, I guess, feeling somewhat bogged down, have a lot on the go. Me, I guess, feeling somewhat bogged down, have a lot on the go, and just feeling somewhat stressed about. Gonna be a new dad, um, and a lot to undertake, and also have been a new husband, before Kelly, I was single for eight years. And like happily single, and for a long time, I said I didn't need anybody, didn't wanna be with anybody, I just wandered around wild. So I'm still learning how to be a good partner, soon I'll learn how to be a good dad, um, and it's stressful, it really is, and uh. Yeah, and Kelly's having some similar issues, and um, not about the dad, but I'm beating being a mom. But I just wanna tell you guys that it's not all rainbows and sunshine, just like you, wherever you are. And not just us, doesn't matter who you're watching, doesn't matter what you're watching, I guarantee those people are having shitty ass days too, just like the rest of us. Uh, we're all going through a struggle, life is tough, it's supposed to be tough, it's supposed to be a struggle, um, just like the sun sets. It's supposed to set, so that the darkness comes, so you appreciate the sun again, if every day was great and perfect, you would not appreciate anything. It would all fall apart, the world would fall apart if everything was just good days, you need the bad days, but that doesn't make it any easier when you're in it. Um, today, we were sitting here in the kitchen, I was, I was in tears, myself, Kelly was in tears, um. And just over just stuff up here, um, it's all, it's all internal stuff, really stuff that. It doesn't matter, it really doesn't matter, a lot of the stresses we put ourselves are purely in your mind. And yeah, it's a bit of a pressure, some days I lie in bed thinking, I'm like, who are you? You think you're like. It's like pressure, like right here, twenty two hundred eighty six people here, and I'm like, God, so I'm like, what, what, what are you doing, like? I've been dreaming about this camp scope for years and years and years, but now that it's real, and we put the word out there, and it's happening, and it's public, um. Sometimes I lay in bed, I'm like, wow, um, it feels like a lot of pressure, you gotta, you gotta follow through with this now, there's no going back. All these people, they're, they're doing this, um, and we're with you, um, so yeah, it's a bit of a struggle, you know?
Yeah, it has been a bit of a struggle. Yeah, especially this week and just things becoming more real in life and being like, oh, my gosh, how am I even an adult? Am I actually an adult, like, oh, I don't feel like I'm. You know, like, living up to my own expectations of myself sometimes, which I think. Is probably a more common thing than most of us think, a lot of us feel pretty alone in that, I think, but at the same time, um. I think a lot of us do struggle with that, like having high expectations for yourself, and when you don't meet them. Feel like crap, and you feel so bad, and you're like, what the heck is wrong with me, why can't I just do this or do that and just get it done, or um. Feel good about it, like for me, this last, I don't know, like handful of weeks. It's just like all compounded onto me today, and yeah, I was crying in this kitchen, being so upset. Because I just feel like not like my usual self. In terms of being like a fun, like whimsical artist, and just like. Going out and creating things, just to create things, and. Also, like, see, seeing some of your guys' comments, like, they're so sweet, and ones that are like. Oh, Kelly, you're, you making bread is inspiring me to make bread, and I'm like, I love this, but that sourdough loaf, bread, bread bowls I made sucked. They sucked, they were so underproofed, anyway, it's just like small things like that, and just feeling like. Like sometimes I'm failing, and that really sucks, and you know. Like, I personally don't have a huge support system right here, like. I don't have like a billion friends calling to talk to and whatever, like Maddie is my big support system alongside like my family, but um. Yeah, I just feel like sometimes it's, I, I don't know, I just feel like a little. Maybe unrelatable, even though I know like m- my struggles are similar to your guys' struggles, it's just, yeah, it just feels hard when you're out here and. You don't have a lot of friends to like talk to about it, um, or relate to. Or I can't really be like, yo, come over and let's have a girls' day and chat about all this stuff that's going on, like, I don't really have that, so. That's been hard, and especially feeling, um, yeah, like a little bit alone in the pregnancy, just right now. Because, yeah, I'm not with my family, I'm like three thousand plus miles away from them. Um, yeah, and it just, yeah, it feels kind of like meh sometimes. And, yeah, sometimes it's hard to get out of bed, because I know, I, or I have a preconceived idea that I'm gonna feel like. Bleh throughout the day, so finding like my good motivations, um. Has been a little bit of a work for me, you know? I never wanna sound ungrateful for what I'm, you know, the life we're living and stuff like that, but I'm just being real, so.
Today Kelly was saying she sucks, she was like, some people are sending her comments, messages, saying they look up to her, she's like. Maybe we shouldn't say it. And she was like, so her hand in tears, said, I suck. Sometimes I feel like that too. I get it, I get that, um, maybe we all feel like that, maybe. Um, just the guy that, if the guy was a father to his kid, and his, his little son looking up to him and looking at him with like Superman in his eyes. And that father thinking his head is like, he only knew, I actually suck. I guess it's a bit of an imposter syndrome, I sneak up, people say that, it's kinda what it is, um, in your mind, you don't really feel what. People see you as sometimes. I know Kelly doesn't suck.
Yeah, I just feel like normal me that's like struggling, so I'm like, oh, God, you know, like, oh. Yeah, it's just a lot, and we're navigating a lot as we like live through these days, and uh. Yeah, like rebuilding this house, being freshly married, having a baby on the way, the house not still being done. Knowing that every single day is like, oh, my gosh, we have to get up and like do as much as we can to get this place better and ready. Is a big stress, um, you know, and we're not, we don't have a big team coming out to help us with the house. We don't have a hardware store five minutes down the road, um, you know, and, and our, you know. Make these videos, which is our whole thing, and we're not gonna stop that, um, but it does take a lot of time, and sometimes. You know, we have these big stormy days, or just not feeling it, it, it also compounds, and sometimes it's a little tough. And you feel, you know, feel like, oh, I didn't work today, or I didn't do anything to move the needle forward, and that sucks, um. But, yeah.
I just wanted to bring that up, just to make you re- remind people that it's not all. On the other side of the screen, um, we're all on this together, doesn't matter who you're talking about. There are actually days, we all have the same struggle, it's a human thing, it's just a human thing, um, and that's why a community like this is so good. Uh, there's so much love, so much love, and I know it sounds corny, love can conquer all. Uh, and that's true, we all know if there's one thing in the world that we need more of, and you can never get too much of. Is love, love for yourself, love for your community, love for your family, love for the earth, love for it all, uh, we need more love. So. Scouts, get out there this week, it's Thursday, you got Friday, Saturday, Sunday, laughing this week, go out there and show some love. Doesn't need to be somebody you know, just to a stranger, to a coworker, to some hobo on the street, whatever it is. Doesn't gotta be groundbreaking, just open the door for someone behind you coming in, seven left behind you, that's it, just open the door for someone. And look many eyes when you do it, you really freak him out, um, just simple stuff, nothing crazy. We all just start opening doors for people, the world will fix itself.
It's a chain reaction, it's like dominoes, once you want, let one fall, they all go. And then you got everyone opening doors for each other, everyone being nice, saying hello, actually giving eye contact to people. Which is, yeah, smile goes a long way, exactly, exactly.
It does. Long way.
Very long way, and it's just another, uh, piece of the puzzle of being humans in this world. And acknowledging each other's soul and spirit, really, cause when we're all looking down, ignoring each other, headphones in, in our own world. That can be nice for, for a while, but at the same time, there's real people out there who need real connection, and you are one of those people too. I'm one of those people, Matt's one of those people, and yeah, that's why we love you guys and this community here. Like seeing all of your comments pop up are so, so great.
Yeah, so you guys are all so nice.
And you're so nice to each other, you guys aren't just nice to us, you're so supportive to each other, so. Please let this be proof that there are amazing people in the world, and you guys are those people, so, although we can all have low days. Just like me, just like you, we're all good, and like, things will smooth out, and we have each other, so.
Okay, Scouts, wrap this up, my lord, I, I owe her twenty minutes here, it's nine twenty here, new flat peeps, that's past our bedtime.
Very past.
Five AM comes early out here, um. So yeah, we love you guys, thank you so much for being here, every one of you, um, we love you. Thank you for watching the Sunday videos, that's what's powering this whole thing, um, keep going, keep sending your love. Show love to someone else, and just get out there and just talk about the foundation that you're starting. When you talk to people, you talk about how you're helping start it, um, it's not ours, it's ours, it's all of ours together. Nothing will be done without everyone knowing, so we love you, good night, and yeah, see you Sunday.
Love you guys, we'll see you on Sunday, open the door for someone, give my contact, tell them you love them.